Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, June 18th, 2012, right at 7:30. This is a meeting of Athens City Council, a regular meeting. So we will be reading and passing some ordinances, I believe. First of all, we need to establish a quorum, which we don't have. We think Member Butler is on his way.
But we imagine he's here, too.
Yeah. So we think Member Butler is on his way. So we'll talk about disposition of minutes. Minutes for the regular session of council held June 4th, 2012. Do you have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the council meeting on June 4th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? When those minutes are adopted. I don't have any communication. Mayor?
Oh, I have a few. The 26th of June, we're going to have the town hall meeting. This is in response to, you know, questions and concerns raised in January.
I'm sorry.
Town hall meeting.
The date again?
June 26th, 6:00 PM, at the community center.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay. I believe you can probably find links to the minutes, as well as video, to the January meeting, where we'll respond to many of the questions and concerns that were raised at that time. In particular, we had things, concerns about homelessness and fracking. I think some of the other ones, of course, were the, I think, school closings, and I have a laundry list I'm putting together for that. Of course, in April, we had that one on. We had a town hall meeting on housing and disabilities. So that, we covered some of that. So there's, and that's also on video, too. We have streaming video of both the April meeting and the January one. And I'd say this one will be the town hall meeting on the 26th. That'll be next week. I think it's a Wednesday, is it? We also have a planning commission this Wednesday, the 20th. We're going to be hearing case 1207, which is the West Stimson, 22 West Stimson, last minute group title 41. So there are two different meetings going on. Other than that, I think that covers everything I can think of.
26th is Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday? Okay. That's when it is, then.
Thank you.
I don't have a calendar for it. I just wrote down the notes on this.
Well, I normally don't.
Oh. She's got a calendar.
It's right in front of me, yeah.
Okay. And that's all I really have.
Okay. Auditorium head?
Well, I'd like to report on our tax amnesty, which still has two weeks to go, anybody out there listening. We're pretty happy with the results. When Tina and I first talked about it, Tina Timberman is our tax administrator, we thought we would be bringing about $10,000. Well, we're over $20,000. Now, I know when we came for our report, she said 10,000 to 20,000. I thought, oh, gosh, you know, but we have brought in, actually, we've brought in $2,379 in tax due and $406.77 in interest. Now, you know, we cut out the penalties and reduced the interest if people would come forward. That's only 13 people who've come forward. We actually haven't quite collected all of that. We've collected about 18,000. And then the other amounts are arrangements have been made to come in soon, or we will be putting them on a payment plan. So we should be able to collect all of it. And one thing about the payment plans is that we changed our current payment plan and put a clause in there that if they don't comply, then it goes back to a normal payment plan, and they lose that waiver of penalty and interest that we have during the amnesty. So that's another reason for them to comply if they do sign up for a payment plan. So anyway, we're pretty happy with that. I just thought I'd let you know, we do have two more weeks.
Two more weeks.
Only 13 people. And the big thing about it is, is now that we have these people, these are people we never would have found on our own. And so now that we have them, then, you know, we know who they are, where they are, and so they're also future taxpayers.
Right.
So that's it for me.
Mayor, did you have something?
No, I was just going to ask, there's two more weeks to go on this. Get yourselves in there.
Law director line?
I have no report, Mr. President. Member Nisley?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for us to approve the monthly auditor's reports that have been distributed to council members.
Second. All those in favor of accepting the auditor's report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we've accepted the auditor's report again. Okay, we have some ordinances for third reading. We may need to move these around. We have called Member Butler, and he's on his way. He's not here yet, and we have, ordinance 6312 has an emergency clause in it, which we need five people to pass. So let's move on to ordinance 6512. Member Gosney, you ready for all these?
I am ready.
Okay. Ordinance 6512, okay. Actually, Member Butler?
Has arrived.
We will...
You can't hide. We know you hide. We put you over that corner right there. All the way up.
Just in time to save the day.
Okay. Member Butler, we are about to go with ordinance 6312 for adoption. And just, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $500,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Nisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of ordinance 6312.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is described as for the issuance of $500,000 of notes. It's part of a larger debt that the city incurred as they made improvements to East State Street a number of years ago, and that those improvements were financed in part with tax incremental funding, and we have paid a portion of that loan off each year. Our balance due this year was 750,000, of which we were able to make a payment of $250,000. So now we owe the last 500,000. This is a short-term note for one year. It was arranged with Hocking Valley Bank at a percentage interest rate of .4, if I'm remembering correctly. So we're hopeful and pleased to see this loan working its way down to a zero balance.
I'm not sure if I sent it to everyone on council or the finance committee, but this started out as a $5 million loan. And the actual street improvements cost over $6 million, but that's how much we borrowed for this loan, so it's come a long way. And it's due on June 29th, so that's next week. We do need this passed tonight.
So that's why we have the emergency clause in here, because we can't wait 30 days to pay this and be on time. So all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 6312, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is passed unanimously. Ordinance 6512, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Union, of Court, comma, Union, comma, Washington and State Streets on Saturday, July 21st, to 1:00 AM on Sunday, July 22nd, 2002, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music festival.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 6512.
Second.
This is the final reading in a series of five ordinances regarding setting up the Boogie on the Bricks annual festival that many of us enjoy, and I've seen several people in this room volunteer for it at different times. This is a great family event in the city, a wonderful way for community members to get together, people of all ages, and just a really, I think it's really fun and one of the greatest events we have during the summer in Athens. And if I could speak to all of the ordinances just briefly, and then I won't comment on the subsequent ones too much. The first one is simply to close the street. That's the one we'll be voting on momentarily. The following ordinance will be to suspend parking fees in the parking garage, to provide free parking for presumably participants or people that attend the event. Third, we will be asking to suspend the vending, peddling, and soliciting city ordinances in order to allow sales of some items in the area. We will be asking to suspend the noise ordinance, so that there are, because there will be a bit of noise being created by the music here, good noise, we hope. And then finally, in order to help ensure public safety, we'll be establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the event on Court Street.
Member Gosney, I think we have an audience member who wants to speak about this?
Yeah.
I'm the director for Boogie on the Bricks, and so if anyone had any questions...
Come up and introduce yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Will Drury. It's my second year as director for Boogie on the Bricks, my third year to be involved. The first meeting, I think there were some questions that Paula Mosley forwarded to us about recycling, and we're partnering with Rural Action, very similar to what was done at the Nelsonville Music Festival, which was absolutely first-class. So they'll be involved on the street. It's a glass-free zone. This year, we're going to do a better job with defining our perimeter, and we're actually, I met with Chief Pyle, and we're going to be working with a third-party security company also that was involved at Nelsonville, CSC, which is a national organization for unarmed security, clearly marked, yellow shirts with numbers. So we'll have those people working the perimeters more in a usher, because one of the things that is so great about Boogie on the Bricks is that we are family-friendly, and we don't have trouble. There's no need for horses and things like that. Our mission statement is family-friendly economic development. That's why it's held during the slowest time of the year. And last year, we felt like we made a lot of progress with people from outside the Athens area driving in and leaving their tourism dollars in Athens. And this year, we've stepped up even more. We've added a second stage. We're a nonprofit. I'm the only paid person. Everything else goes back into the event. And so we've now established a rainy day fund, where if we have one bad year, we don't go away, we can come back again. And this year, we did well last year, and so we're spending almost $12,000 more on entertainment and advertising. We actually have a national headliner coming in, which is Big Sam's Funky Nation from New Orleans, which is going to be an unbelievable show. Then on our second stage, we're adding, we felt like we have the children's area for small kids. We have stuff for adults. We felt like the group between 12 and 18, we really didn't have a lot to offer. We'll be adding some carnival-type games, not rides, but just games. And then the second stage, we'll have the winners of the local high school band, the Battle of the Bands, so they'll be involved. Just more community involvement. And most of our games are going to be manned by organizations within the community. Again, my ultimate goal for this is, you know, it's Athens hosting an event that everyone else comes in, and so as many different groups and organizations that can get involved and give them all their own little place out on the street, you know, the better off it's going to be for everyone. So if anyone else has any other questions, I'm sure.
Thank you for doing the work you do to organize this. It's one of the, like I said, one of my favorite events here in Athens.
Great.
One of my questions is, looking towards future years, do you anticipate that it will again coincide with Brew Week?
That's not something that I've even looked at at this point, because what I would hope is that, you know, especially with this going to semesters, I would like to see Brew Week flourish in the week that they're in, because what we're doing this year, just to try to keep the momentum of an entire week going, we've added what we've called Boogie Nights, where we're, out of our budget, we're sponsoring events uptown, just to make a full week of activities. So we're bringing in some bands on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that maybe we wouldn't necessarily be able to afford for, based on our capacities here in Athens, and so we're going to supplement what a venue would normally spend on entertainment that night, to bring in maybe a step up that we wouldn't normally get to have here. And so hopefully, when, two years down the road, now Athens has an event in June and an event in July that is equally as big and a week long, and brings people in during the summer. That, I hope things work out that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance O6512, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. This ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 6612, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations on Saturday, July 21st, to 1:00 AM Sunday, July 22nd, 2012, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music festival. Member Gosney?
I would like to move adoption of ordinance 6612.
Second.
All those in favor of ordinance 6612, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, this is passed also. Ordinance 6712, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on July 21st and 22nd, 2012, during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music Festival. Member Gosney?
Again, I would like to move adoption of ordinance 6712.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 6712 is passed. Ordinance 6812, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in the Downtown Area on July 21st, 2012, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music festival. Member Gosney?
I would like to move adoption of ordinance 6812.
Second.
All those in favor of ordinance 6812, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This ordinance also is adopted. Ordinance 6912, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music Festival on Saturday, July 21st, to 1:00 AM Sunday, July 22nd, 2012. Member Gosney?
I move adoption of ordinance 6912.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, same sign. All these ordinance are passed, then. Moving on to ordinance 7012, an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Michael Holbrook, owner, Muffler Man, 219 Columbus Road, to allow the replacement of the face panel on an existing sign on the city right-of-way. Introduced by Councilmember Fall, who's going to speak to this.
I can speak to it. Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 7012.
Second.
And this is explained in the title, allows Michael Holbrook, who is the owner of Muffler Man, to replace the face panel on a sign that is in the city right-of-way.
And the city has, passed an ordinance some time ago, that allows merchants to use the right-of-way in front of their business if they get a revocable license from the city for that use. Those licenses are for 10 years, and so this is the renewal of a 10-year revocable license. I'm sorry, I interrupted. All those in favor of ordinance 7012, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7112, an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Demetrius Procos, owner, 80 East State Street, for the use of the city's right-of-way. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of ordinance 7112.
Second.
And as explained by President Sands, the, this is a renewal of a revocable license, so it happens every 10 years. And this particular one is for Demetrius Procos, at his location of 80 East State Street, for using the city's right-of-way for signs.
Yes, sir.
Actually, if you read that, it only, it actually covers also handicap access ramp and some steps and landing. I guess, actually, part of the structure is in the city right-of-way.
Yeah.
So again, it's renewable.
All those in favor of ordinance 7112, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance 7112 is adopted. Ordinance 7212, an ordinance authorizing improvements to city parks, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept ordinance 7212.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this ordinance is to improve the South Side Park, which is the corner of Richland Avenue and Dairy Lane, to put a rubberized matting down. This will allow the safety service, Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids and enter into agreements with the installer of the rubberized surface for the matting. It also allows for the transfer of $80,000 from the Community Development Block Grant revolving loan fund into the Community Development Block Grant Fund, which is 248, to be used for this particular project.
Mayor, did you have anything to add?
At this point, I'm not sure we're going by materials or the service. I still haven't, I don't think Rich has decided one way or the other. He's still out there with the numbers together. I think conversation at the staff meeting was that he's still doing square footage in both the South Side Park and the other park areas, and seeing what kind of combination he can get. So that's, it's, it'll be done when this gets done, that's for sure.
Thank you. Madam, comment? I'm sorry, yes. Member Butler?
Thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, though, this is to enhance our parks' accessibility for people with disabilities, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
And again, I think this is huge, this is beneficial for a population of our society. There's a stigma with disability, and I think this helps create a fair playing field. So I support this measure.
Thank you. Mayor Wyll?
I will point out, this is done in conjunction with the Athens Rotary Club. They did a lot of lion's share of the gathering of funds. This is to top it off and finish it, to make it accessible for wheelchairs. I think there's another, some other progress going on to the bridge on Dairy Lane. There's conversation about rehabbing that building, fixing that as well. So there's things going on.
Any other comments?
Just quickly, I recently saw a park that had this type of material laid down, and it will improve the facility for everyone that is there, for everyone, but as well as, we're speaking about increasing access to everyone, but it will improve it for pretty much all the children that, go there.
All those in favor of ordinance 7212, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. We have ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 7512, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nisley. Want to add anything at this point? Ordinance 7712, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a professional services contract with the Athens-Hocking Solid Waste District and Recycling Center and declaring an emergency. Mayor Wyll?
Again, this is re-upping our contract. The structure, you can see this for three years, or actually from 2012 to 2014, I should say, two years. Again, there's changes in the works, because we have, the EPA has pretty much conditionally accepted our strategic plan for solid waste, how we're going to improve the recycling. They require some implementation, of course, looking at a materials recovery facility, or MRF, which I'm sure you heard lots about from Nancy Bane when she was a member of council. So some of the contracts will include, of course, if there's a generation fee that will be tacked on, we'll probably have to reflect that in our cost as well. Again, this is something that's moving along. Member Gosney sat in for, as a public representation, representative at the last policy meeting. They re-upped most of the members from the policy, solid waste policy bureau committee that will actually kind of guide the implementation of their solid waste program that we have. So there's, again, it's part of a, an orchestrated effort to increase our recycling and get less stuck in landfill.
Actually, increase the recycling of the district.
Yes, of the district, both Hocking and Athens County.
Athens is doing pretty well.
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 7812, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the Safe Routes to School, Project 262, declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first introduction of an ordinance that would result in the installation of two, or construction of two new sidewalks in the city, one on Miller by Arts West and also one on South Shannon, with a total cost estimated to be a little over $178,000 with grant funds covering, these are federal funds, covering a little over $145,000 of that. So the lion's share of the cost for this project would be from reimbursable grant funding.
Okay, this is first reading. Mayor?
And again, this is round number three, I believe. We're trying for round number four. This dovetails with our pedestrian bike master plan that we've been putting together for many years. Again, this is in conjunction with schools, PTO, PTA, looking at areas that would be helpful for children to actually get a good sidewalk and safe, as I say, safe routes to school, bottom line. So we'll see how it goes. Should be good.
And there was some discussion earlier about the possibility of some kind of crossing markings also?
There was at our previous meeting.
Crosswalk across West State to Arts West, essentially from our cemetery, West State Street Cemetery, to the Arts West, so it directs everybody to the sidewalk. That's one of the weak points we have right now, of course, is the, that Miller, which is a short stretch, but it gets a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic and car traffic, vehicle traffic. The idea there is that if we can lead them to go on the new sidewalk when it's put in, it'll make it much easier and safer.
Thank you. Ordinance 7912, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for construction and construction engineering of the Safe Routes to School, Project Number 262, amending ordinance 03512 and authorizing the additional funding and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of a follow-on to the ordinance that was just read by Member Gosney, where we're looking to, or the Service Safety Director, this will allow the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids and enter into agreements or contracts with the construction, contractor and construction, construction and construction engineering for the Safe Routes to School program, for the amount of $173,348. This is coming out of the Street Fund 220, TC 500. Again, this will be used for curb improvements, curb ramps, the sidewalk, 3,486 square feet of sidewalk, as a matter of fact, and the crosswalk that the mayor was just describing that will be going over, across Miller, as well as lighting through that area.
Questions or comments?
Again, this is also a reimbursable for the $145,000, $146,000, so we have to put the money out, and we get, of this, 170, what was it, 174 approximately, we'll get about 145 back. So that's why we have to do it this way.
And ordinance 8012, an ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is...
Need to get a, what?
For $8,500 from the City Enhancement Fund, 250, TC 300, for the demolition of a structure on 21 Hocking Street. And it will be, that money will be recouped through taxation, property taxing, taxes with the demolition of said property.
The auditors, we've already made, accepted your minutes, I believe. Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak.
Next.
Oh, we're, excuse me. Oh, no, we don't. Other business? Okay. Oh, other business, I'm supposed to ask first, I'm sorry. We need to know, we need to have a... We need to know, we need to have a special session next week, and it looks like Wednesday? Wednesday is the best day, and it could be during the day or it could be evening.
We need five people, is that what I'm hearing? For an emergency clause, reading of one, or voting on what was that, emergency clause? So we have five now, so all you five can get together sometime before you're down to four.
Let's just do it now.
Anytime Wednesday.
Anytime.
Anytime Wednesday.
Day? Day is better. Day is better.
Did I hear, just before the planning commission?
Planning, before 12 at the planning commission, before 2 for my press conference. I'll gladly give up my press conference for a special session of city council, whatever you guys choose. That's at 2. So anywhere between before 12, after 1, or right before 2, or at 2. Whatever works for you guys.
It'll be fairly short.
11:45.
11:45.
11:45.
Okay. 11:45. Come to the council office?
Yeah.
So we're having a special session on Wednesday, which, what's the date?
That'd be 21st.
June 27.
27th. 27th or?
11:45.
27th.
27th.
Okay.
This is a special council.
Actually, I think this week is the planning commission, so next week is not a planning commission, so you have 12 o'clock as a window if you want to use it.
Okay.
Okay, we're doing it at noon.
Okay. And you're going to read everything over?
Yes.
That's on the agenda right now?
Yes.
This room.
Yeah, well, we'll be in here at noon on Wednesday, 27. Now, I'm sorry, now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that were not covered. If anybody wants to talk to us?
Yeah, this would be a chance for you to say something.
My name's Chris Schmuel, and I'm a Democratic candidate for county commissioner, and I'm here observing, and I've been going around to the villages and such. So I'm just listening, and you guys are some of my inspiration for getting into politics. So I do want to thank you guys for being some progressive leaders in our area, and I guess that's why I'm trying to get involved at the county level. So I'm interested in hearing ideas from you guys, how the county commissioner can, you know, maybe help you guys achieve goals here in the city.
Oh, Mayor Wile?
Actually, I asked Chris to announce that, I did a proclamation earlier this week, Saturday, for the Athens Farmers Market Week. That's the proclamation. It's the 40th anniversary of the Athens Farmers Market, of which he's one of the farmers. That's what he was supposed to do, that's why he showed up there.
All right, well, yes. I didn't hear Mayor Wile's presentation, but my wife told me he was quite animated. And we appreciate, Mayor, he's always down at the farmer's market, purchasing local products and providing incomes for, you know, people around the region, not just Athens County, not just, you know, so, yeah, I mean, we're really lucky to have our farmer's market. I think last year, we sold six hours a day, or six hours a week, what, $2.3 million worth of stuff.
Wow.
So, yeah, it's providing income and livelihoods for many people, as well as healthy food and for a lot of families. So I'm really proud to be a part of it, and we love Athens, and we love all you people that shop down there. Proclamation, yes.
Yeah, I said I was ringing the bell too much.
It's good to get excited.
Yes. It actually is about 100 farmers at its top end, and I know that they've had to turn a few away. Again, it's part of making us, our local economy stronger, sustainable, and as Chris mentioned, healthier food. It's also, I go there for the shopping, but I also go there to hear the gossip. I find out, everybody will tell me what I need to know at the farmer's market. Some of them aren't voters, but at the same time, they'll let you know what needs to be done, one way or the other.
Yeah, and I think we can be really proud of our legacy that we've already shown, and, you know, things like the 30 Mile Meal Program. This is, you know, we're going to outreach to other parts of the state and the region. You know, we can create jobs by providing for our needs. It's good for the environment, too, because it's energy efficient to buy local food. The average fossil fuel, or the average food calorie consumes 14 fossil fuel calories in transportation. So when we're buying local, not only are we, you know, good for personal health, but, you know, global health, too. So, thanks for listening.
We have regular committee meetings on the next Monday. I know some people won't be here, but do we have committees that do need to meet? And Butler?
Yes, thank you. Next week, we will have a presentation regarding some information from the Art and Economic Prosperity Four, which is a report of the economic impact of nonprofit arts and culture organizations in Athens County, Ohio. So it sort of dovetails some of the things that Mr. Schmuel was talking about with the economic impact of the arts in our, in our community, in our region. So we'll have a presentation on that next Monday.
I've heard.
It's impressive.
With hints about it, that it's a great, a great presentation.
Yes.
Do we have other?
Finance and personnel.
Who would have guessed?
Was there going to be a perfection discussion going on? No. Is that in finance, or?
Yes.
Yes, that will be in finance.
Any other committees need to meet? Not that we know of right now. Okay. I guess that's it. We are adjourned at 8:07.